Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Craft?
Here.
Mencer?
Here.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. Oh, announcements, oh, excuse me. Right, we have no announcements. We just had this conversation, she told me she had announcements. Would you like to make the announcements?
I do have some meetings. Tuesday, February 6th, the Beautification Commission will meet at 7 o'clock here at City Hall. Also, the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting that was scheduled for February 6th and the Planning Commission meeting that was scheduled for February 6th have been canceled. The Historical Commission will meet on Wednesday, February 14th, at 7:00 PM at City Hall. And, if that's all I have.
Okay, so anyone else have announcements? Okay. Adoption of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, public participation's time. You may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name and residential address and you adhere to our three-minute rule.
Good evening, my name is Joyce Stroh. I live at 160 South Highland, Mount Clemens, Michigan. And I would like to say that I'm a member of a grassroots organization called So Can, which means Save Our City and Neighborhoods. And I appreciate all you folks are doing to do those very things. With the Park Place Towers, we agree that because it was an existing low income, that you should go ahead because it also is giving the city more. In thinking about new properties, we need to have a more balanced community. There's no place for me to move to when I get a little bit older, and that's coming soon. The parcel on floral, there is a way to block out the railroad tracks and the stone company, and the phrase is build the wall. They did that with the apartment building, they refurbished it over on Logan by Rite Aid. They have beautiful gates to keep the people out with entrance into it that's personal so nobody can just open that gate, and it's flourishing. So, things can be done, but consider our middle class, upper class, we need someplace to go and people are leaving right now, and we need a more balanced city. I want to thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Josh Elger, 1349 Ball Memorial. I was voted by my peers to serve as a chairman of the Board of Mount Clemens Public Housing Commission for the last five years. I say I was because now I was not reappointed to the Housing Commission, and this is why I'm here today. I am wanting to know how people are appointed or reappointed to various committees, boards, and commissions within the city of Mount Clemens. I would like to state a few facts to the City Commission to understand what is going on within and with the Housing Commission. We had a trustee resign back in December, at our December meeting, and as of now, this member's position has not been filled. I asked the city manager why doesn't, I asked why the city manager did not follow the hierarchy of some communications that we've had in our organization. I, as a chairman, or when I was a chairman, I am the spokesperson for the Commission. Any questions that she should have should come to me first, be directed to me, and I'll be answered by me. As an example, last Monday, we had a reorganizational meeting. We had to rechange our meetings three different times because of not able to have a quorum. One, because we were short a member, one member had a death in the family, and another member just decided he's not going to show up. I'll explain more later. The city manager called one of the trustees two days prior to our meeting and questioned why we changed our meeting, the time and the location. After we have posted the meeting at the required amount of time, in a space, in a public place, it was in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, our Public Housing Commission bylaws, the city manager still called the trustee member to ask them why the meeting was changed, but did not call the chairman or the chairwoman of the board, the vice chairman. The city manager wanted us to cancel our meeting. If we did so, this would cause us to, a direct violation of our bylaws, which states that we have to have our organizational meeting in January. When I said earlier that we didn't have a quorum, this is because that we have a trustee that continuously decides that he does not need to show up at our meetings. He has attendance problem. He has a 42 percent absentee rate. He was reappointed last year by the city manager to another five-year term. I have missed 3 percent of the meetings. This member that was reappointed missed 42 percent of the meetings. I'll give you a copy so you can see the attendance records. He missed 42, I missed 3, and I'm the one that's not reappointed. I questioned the previous city administration about this board member several times. I was informed by that city manager, that, I informed the city manager at that time that the Housing Commission bylaws state that if a member misses four consecutive meetings, which he did, and/or 25 percent of the meetings, he shall be excused from the Commission. I was informed-
Sorry. Do you want to just pass it out? Thank you. Anyone else?
I think everyone has this problem with our street cleaning and snow blowing. I've been here 23 years, I've never complained, never called the sheriff or the police if someone's parking in front of my house. But this is really getting ridiculous when my son, or my son-in-law, or my neighbor comes and plows me out, cleans the front of my house, piles the snow on my lawn, and then all of a sudden a neighbor down the street comes and parks in front of my house. I don't mind if it's an hour or two, but you're talking two in three days? So, I've had other people say, call the sheriff. I won't call the sheriff for that, the sheriff is too busy for that. But the thing is, you put an article in the paper, where to park your cars, people are not reading this article. So maybe if they read this article, they should get a ticket if they don't do what they're doing. I pay my taxes, my utilities, I'm not behind in anything, and I'm not getting my full service with my street cleaning. It's also with the leaves parking. I have it on my phone where the neighbor parked in my house for five days. So finally, one of my neighbors took all the leaves, said the leaves on the street would, the street would pick them up, they put them on my lawn. And I just called the city about two weeks ago, and they were kind enough to come and take all the leaves off my lawn that were piled up. But you know, that's all I can say. I pay my taxes, I pay my utilities, and I'm not getting my full service. The city has to implicate some kind of a law so you cannot park. And it does say to go on the side streets, but like I said, people are not reading it. They only read what they want to read. And if they do read it, they don't care because they got away with it before. Now, I talk to people in Clinton Township, Harrison Township, they don't have these problems because they know that the signs are posted. Why can't we have posted signs on every street or in the middle of a street, maybe two on the block? You cannot park during snow cloud days or street cleaning days. But it's not working, system is not working. And I'm really, really getting disgusted. I remember about seven or eight years ago, my son had to leave for work at 4:15 in the morning. Not only the neighbor parked in front of my house, they parked three feet into my drive because of the snow, they couldn't tell the driveway was there. My son's got a temper, so he's having to be laid on the horn at 4:15 in the morning, laying on the horn. Nobody came out, finally the police come, he says, we're getting called that you're laying on the horn. I said, yeah, I can't get out. The snow, the car is in the front, I can't be laid from work. You know, this is ridiculous that we have to live like this. People today are not getting smart, they're getting more on the tele, they're getting more, I don't know, they just don't care. So if we can do something to implicate, or put this on the front page in red, in big letters where they can read it. Put it on the doorways when you come in, put it on your water bill, put it on our utilities bill, please observe the parking rules during street cleaning and snow cleaning time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain. Ditto, ditto, ditto. As I was leaving the city today, your code enforcer, he happened to be coming in. And as I turned, I said, you know that paint truck in front of the house next door to me? My property is about 100 across, 200 back. I said, when they did the snow the other day, I said, they have to, they get right by my driveway and they pull out so they don't run into his truck sitting on the street. I went through hell and high water the last time to get the city to come and have him move it. Well, the code enforcer, he finally came after two days, the last time. Well, needless to say, around the 19th of January, he finally sent a report over to the Sheriff's Department, and when they came, he stated he had pictures and everything, and he had went to the house, the code enforcer. And when I looked at the pictures, guess what? That 12 inches of snow that was there from near the front of my house, all the way to where that truck is, wasn't there. It wasn't there. It showed a nice, perfect little melt by the 20th of January. I haven't been able to get over, back over here to see him because I was pissed off today. I really was. Because right now, when the city truck came, there's all this snow there from the other day. Guess what? We got another three inches coming, at least three days the rest of this week. So do, you know, it's bad enough dealing with the post office, but now I gotta deal with this man with this commercial truck parked on the street, and he has a driveway that is perfectly empty, perfectly empty, and he doesn't move the truck any and every day. As you can tell, I'm a little tipped off. I wasn't going to say anything, but guess what? When Gloria got up and talked about it, this is an issue. Here we have codes, and your code enforcer stated that, well, we weren't under a weather watch or storm watch.
Snow emergency.
I said, excuse me, when you get four inches of snow, and then you turn around and get another six, excuse me. If that's not a snow emergency, I don't know what is. And now you got three or four the other day, and we got others coming, and I got all this snow in front of my house and where it swerves out, and Bain Street becomes a one-track Annie. You gotta stop till another car comes by, it's not right. Commercial vehicles. So basically what we're saying is that anybody can park your car anywhere, your commercial vehicles anywhere, and guess what? Nothing's going to happen to you in the city. Nothing's going to happen to you in the city. So citizens and whatever, your commercial trucks and cars, do whatever you want to do. Because the way it seems right now, nothing's going to happen in this city.
Thank you. Anyone else? Move of, approve of the minutes previous meetings.
Administrative response.
There aren't any.
Motion to approve the minutes from the work session and the City Commission meeting, January 16th, 2018.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
General Business, 9A. Request approval of the allocation of the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Funds. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the recommendation, or the recommended allocation of 2018 CDBG funds.
Support.
It is estimated that the city of Mount Clemens will receive $59,254 in Community Development Block Grant Funds in the 2018 calendar year. A public hearing was held on January 2nd, 2018, and a work session was held on January 16th, 2018. City Administration proposes the following allocation of funds which must be spent by December 31st, 2019. There's $31,640 for removal of architectural barriers at public facilities, $18,254 for demolition and clearance, $6,000 in the minor repair, pro, minor home repair program, $360 in interfaith volunteer caregivers, $2,000 from Macomb County Warming Center, and $1,000 for the Macomb Homeless Coalition.
Any questions, comments? Okay, roll call.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Okay, 9B. Request approval of resolution authorizing the continuing of the Pay in Lieu of Taxes pilot agreement and a municipal service agreement between the city of Mount Clemens and Park Place Towers Association, Park Place Towers at 34 Park Street. Need a motion?
Move to approve the resolution continuing the pilot agreement at the rate of 6 percent of total rental charges, less utilities paid, for Park Place Towers at 34 Park Street, and approve the municipal services agreement requiring annual payments of $35,000 and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same.
Support.
Park Place Towers Associates Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership has purchased Park Place Towers with a federally aided mortgage. As part of the financing and planned rehabilitation, the purchaser is requesting a continuation of the existing pilot agreement at 6 percent of the total annual rental or occupancy charges collected, less cost of utilities paid by the owner. In addition to the 6 percent pilot, the attached municipal services agreement would require the owner to pay an annual amount of $35,000 to the city, adjusted up annually based on the Consumer Price Index. The resolution and municipal services agreement shall not terminate so long as the mortgage remains outstanding and unpaid, or any financing aided by the federal government or the authority remains outstanding and unpaid, or the authority has any interest in the property or for a period not to exceed 20 years from the date hereof, whichever occurs first. The resolution and municipal services agreement were prepared by the city attorney.
Comments, questions?
I do have one question.
Yes.
So, under this new agreement, what was the old agreement? What were they paying prior to this, under the previous?
10 percent.
10 percent.
No MSA.
No MSA.
So, what was the, I'm sorry, go ahead. What was the city's percentage then, in terms of, 10 percent, but what did we receive in revenue or tax?
I don't have the exact figure, but they paid about $80,000 a year in the 10 percent rental, and the city ended up getting about $23,000.
I guess in-
Push your button. I'm having trouble tonight.
In defense, I am totally against pilots, but I'm against pilots that don't profit the city. And this pilot profits the city, and so therefore, I'm in favor of it. We, the small amount of money, and she just mentioned the number, that we would get in taxes, even though they pay this large sum of money in taxes, that goes to all of the other municipalities, and we are the bottom. So, we're the dredge at the bottom, and we don't get but a very little bit of that major tax assessment. So, by us having a, what's it called?
MSA. MSA.
MSA, yeah. With us having an MSA agreement, that gives us that money straight into our coffer, and it doesn't get split by anybody else. Nobody else can touch it but our own city. So, you know, again, I don't like pilots, but sometimes a pilot is a good idea. And so, with that, I will throw my support toward this.
Anyone else?
Mayor, can I just clarify that? At the 10 percent for Park Place, the actual amount that the city received was $21,202.56.
And under this?
And under this, we'll stand to, it's about $47,721.54.
And it's our understanding that the new owners of this limited housing development, whatever, they are going to improve the property.
Correct, right. They are actually rehabilitating the entire property with financing through this pilot.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Approve purchase and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchase and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Mencer?
Under the sealed bids for the estimated annual requirement of corrosion inhibitor, I just wondered, it looks like we've highlighted Shannon Chemical Corporation. That's coming from Pennsylvania, are we paying shipping charges on that? Is that, was that? It is the lowest price, but I'm wondering if shipping charges comes into play there. It's got to all be included, right? It was all included?
Yeah. Yes, whatever the bid is, it has to all be conclusive.
Okay. And then, I also wondered about the bid for the estimated annual requirement of heavy equipment rental. I see that we've chosen Fontana, and I was just kind of looking at that, that it's a minor difference between ALA, and, but they're charging us 10 percent on materials, and they're going to charge us time and a half on weekends and holidays. I wondered if we did any kind of cost analysis of what it would cost us for the weekends and holidays, because it seems like that's when all of our, you know, major trauma always happens. Our water main breaks always seem to be on weekends and holidays.
Well, I can tell you that with the previous contractor, the way that it's read, weekends and emergency calls, well, every time that we call them, it is for an emergency. And so that additional charge is going to come into play, and has in the past, and we haven't been completely satisfied with their work over the past contract with that particular company.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Approve purchase and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchase and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Mencer?
Under the sealed bids for the estimated annual requirement of corrosion inhibitor, I just wondered, it looks like we've highlighted Shannon Chemical Corporation. That's coming from Pennsylvania, are we paying shipping charges on that? Is that, was that? It is the lowest price, but I'm wondering if shipping charges comes into play there. It's got to all be included, right? It was all included?
Yeah. Yes, whatever the bid is, it has to all be conclusive.
Okay. And then, I also wondered about the bid for the estimated annual requirement of heavy equipment rental. I see that we've chosen Fontana, and I was just kind of looking at that, that it's a minor difference between ALA, and, but they're charging us 10 percent on materials, and they're going to charge us time and a half on weekends and holidays. I wondered if we did any kind of cost analysis of what it would cost us for the weekends and holidays, because it seems like that's when all of our, you know, major trauma always happens. Our water main breaks always seem to be on weekends and holidays.
Well, I can tell you that with the previous contractor, the way that it's read, weekends and emergency calls, well, every time that we call them, it is for an emergency. And so that additional charge is going to come into play, and has in the past, and we haven't been completely satisfied with their work over the past contract with that particular company.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support. Roll call. Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kra.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
City mayors report?
City offices will be closed on Monday, February 19th in observance of President's Day. Therefore, the next regularly scheduled city commission meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 20th. Refuge pickup will remain on schedule during the week of February 19th. Michigan Municipal League is offering training to the city's elected officials on Tuesday, February 27th, from 6 till 9 p.m. at City Hall. And as part of the city's bicentennial celebration, various history displays will be highlighted at City Hall. The Hall of History display for the month of February will feature Mount Clemens Community Schools and St. Mary's School. We welcome you to come and witness our unique history.
Any questions? Okay, Commissioner, comments? Commissioner Mensah?
So, radon is a colorless, odorless gas emitted from rocks and soil. It increases in buildup in your basements during the winter months because it's all enclosed. The county health department up here in Mount Clemens on Elizabeth and Grossbeck is offering free testing kits. You know, you'll, there's directions, you hang it in your basement, and you give it back to them, and they'll tell you if there's any, any kind of radon. So, you can pick them up there in the environmental health section from 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. And free service, might as well try it if you have a basement. I wanted to remind you, our veterans, that there is a free shuttle to the John Dingell Veterans Affairs Medical Center in Detroit for all veterans. They want you to call two days in advance, 586-469-5315. There are several pickup locations. The nearest to Mount Clemens is at the VVA, Vietnam Veterans of America, 154 Chapter Location on 15 Mile Road in Clinton Township. The Little Free Library over at Seminole Elementary is just going gangbusters. I've been filling that thing up every Saturday, and actually, I filled it up tonight because I missed Saturday. The children seem to be really enjoying it. I'm still collecting books. Take a book, leave a book, put a book back, keep a book, but everybody is welcome to add children's books to that Little Free Library in Seminole Hill, so I would really appreciate it. I'm, I'm hoping that kids are reading these. I put some Nancy Drews and some C.S. Lewis in there today, so come on, kids, go, go get your book. And in keeping with my tradition, because I believe it is up to us to advertise and support our businesses in town, where I have been over the last month, I've been to Max &amp; Ollie's, in fact, I've been a couple times. I've been to the ABC Magic Shop. I've been to Artist Music, and had a nice chat with the new owner. I've been to Gumbos. I'm addicted to their cornbread. It is calling me in the middle of the night. I've been to Weirdsville, I've been to Paperback Writers. You might want to stop in there, they've done some really great remodeling, they have a nice long counter now, they've got some interesting stuff. And, and they were playing some really great music when I was in there the other day, I was like having flashbacks to the 70s. I've been to Bass City Bistro, I've been to Your Mother's, and I have been to visit Metro Technology Company, that's a technology company located in the Vicant Center. That's my story tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
No comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Fournier.
When Mrs. Stevenson and Mrs. Koziniak get up and talk about an issue, I know there's an issue, because they're very positive about the city, about everything that goes on here, and I, I actually have to, while I don't have it personally by my home, I do know on certain streets where there is a lot of parking on the street and no respect for a snow emergency, it does create an issue. And perhaps we need to look at something that can help that. Part of the problem, of course, is some of the rentals and the numerous cars that they take with those rentals in addition to the commercial trucks. So, I, I would like us to look at that as well. I'm interested in hearing more about SoCal, our, and what it stands for. I thought that Mrs. Stroh made a very good point, we want to balance community. It's not that we are prejudiced in one way or the other against low-income housing, high-income housing, middle-income housing, senior housing, disabled housing, whatever housing, but we want to balance. And that is what we're all striving for and looking for when we look at this. With that, I wish everyone a good week. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the people who did come and get educated on the pilot program and what it does. I would also like to encourage people to not push their snow into the street. That's another issue that I think is, is a problem. If you're driving down the street and you've got a nice clear street, and then all of a sudden someone pushes, well, I was going to say a ton of snow, but anyway, pushes snow into the street, then you have a hazard. You know, you can skid, you can have an accident trying to avoid it, whatever. So, please, people, don't push your snow into the street. You can pilot on the curb, on the side of your driveway, it'll work just as well. I keep giving trivial information, so we'll try again. According to Google, the month of February is American Heart Month, Black History Month, Creative Romance Month, I guess that has to do with Valentine's Day, National Cherry Month, I'm not going to touch that, National Children's Health Month, those are some of the things that February represent. And of the days, according to Google, February 4th is Super Bowl Sunday, the 52nd, and congratulations to the Eagles. February 8th is Boy Scout Day, celebrating the birth of scouting. February, February the 11th, Make a Friend Day. February 12th, Abraham Lincoln's birthday, I think I got it right this time. February 13th, Mardi Gras or Fat Tuesday. February 14th, Valentine's Day. February 16th, no, 15th, Susan B. Anthony Day. February 16th, Chinese New Year Day. February 17th, Random Acts of Kindness Day. And February 19th is President's Day. And if you can't find any of those things to celebrate, you're missing the vote, I guess. Like to give you some information about some not-so-well-known things about black American accomplishments. Peter Johnson invented eye protect, protectors. Johnson's design used two layers of semi-opaque cloth to reduce the light that comes from the furnace where firemen were working. This was back in 1880. Charles B. Brooks, a black man from Newark, New Jersey, invented the U.S. first self-propelled street sweeper truck, and patented it on February, I mean, on March 17th, 1896. Brooks also patented a, the first paper punch with a receptacle for holding the chads. I think there was a big issue about chads in one of our elections. Alfred L. Cranle was an American businessman who, an inventor, who was best known for inventing the ice cream scoop. That was in 1897. Henry Thomas Sampson holds several patents focused, focusing on the development of rocket propellant fuels. In 1973, Sampson invented a, an improved process of case bonding of propellant grains in rocket fuel. And lastly, Richard Bowie Spikes, he either patented or developed, or helped develop the following, the beer tap, that's one, mobile directional signals, automatic gear shift device based on automatic transmission, billiard cue stick rack, brake testing machine, horizontal sewing, I'm sorry, horizontal swinging barber chair, and lastly, safety braking systems. So, there are a lot of little tidbit things that we take for granted that you don't know who invented them, and you figure that someone else did, but these are accomplishments of black inventors and black entrepreneurs. And for the wisdom tonight, since this is Black History Month, I chose a couple from Martin Luther King. "He who passively accepts evil is as much involved in it as he who helps perpetrate it. And nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity." And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Commissioner Kra.
I'd like to thank everyone who came out to my coffee talk on, in January. I had one coffee talk last, last month, and we had record attendance, which was exciting, and we had several new people join us, so that was also exciting. My coffee talk dates for this month are February 13th, which is a Tuesday, and February 17th, which is a Saturday, both at 9:30 in the morning at John's Family Grill on Cass Avenue. I want to kind of ditto Commissioner Fournier's comments about the snow removal. It is happening on, I think, a lot of the neighborhoods in our, in our, a lot of neighborhoods, not just one in particular. I know what happens in front of my house. My husband curses when he has to dig out the driveway again because our neighbors seem to want to park in front of our house. But I also know that there are solutions. I know I've mentioned that in other cities, Hazel Park in one particular, they do have a system where on your garbage days, you are not allowed from nine o'clock in the morning till three o'clock in the afternoon, you're not allowed to park on the street. So, it enables the garbage trucks to get by in an easier fashion, but it also then can designate those streets for plowing or for street sweeping. And it just gives everyone into a habit of every Wednesday, if that's your garbage day, you don't park on the street. And it seems, they have a lot of rentals in Hazel Park, they have a lot of similar issues, and so it's a lot of small streets. So, I know that it can be done, and I'm not saying that every, that may not fit us exactly, but I think we have to do things differently. Also, somebody brought up at one of my, at the last coffee talk, that it is difficult to be notified for snow emergencies, and while we think that it's common sense, maybe it's not so much. So, people are wondering how they can be notified. Of course, we have the traditional ways of on TV, we have on the radio, I believe, 950, isn't it?
Yes.
WWJ. I was wondering if there could be, I know that there are systems out there that are affordable, where people register their cell phone number, and then you can send out text alerts, and the city can do that. So, I don't know if that's something that maybe we should look into, because I know that those are affordable ways to get communication out. Also, could be used for water main breaks and, and other issues that could come up that we need to notify people quickly. I do know that the city also is posting things on their city Facebook page, so if you haven't liked that page and you are on social media, go over to City of Mount Clemens, just search it, and like the city page, it does give you a lot of valuable information, so that's all I have.
Website also.
Which, I'm sorry?
The website.
Oh, and the website, right. And isn't there, there's a way to get alerts for email, but it doesn't, it's not for like water main breaks and things, right?
No, that's just agendas right now.
That's just agendas, okay. So, there you go. That's all I have today. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I too agree with what Mrs. Stevens said. I don't even have a driveway, so if there is a snow emergency, I move it to a neighbor's driveway, or I've parked in the alley, and the people were working on their house across the street, they parked in front of my house, the plows come through, and it's the same situation. You've got 25 feet of snow in front of your house, I come home, and it's a disaster. Same thing with the leaves. I've had more complaints this year about leaves because people don't move their cars. The street streeters couldn't get through. It's, people have complained, like Commissioner Kra said, we need to have our cars off the streets on the first garbage day of the month or something. It's time to stop talking about this and start acting on it, because people are mad about it. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Good. I want to congratulate O'Hallorans for the chili cook-off. They won this year. And also, if you, I hope you had a chance to get down this weekend for the Fire and Ice. The sculptures were fantastic. Many of them were sculptures of representing, or I should say, the City of Mount Clemens through the bicentennial. We had boats, Packer boats, we had airplanes, Muscle Man, I noticed that one. There was, I want to say over 52, maybe more, 52.
That's a lot.
Ice sculptures, which I think is the most we've had. And I know it was really cold this weekend, I heard from a lot of people where the kids just loved it, and the parents just wanted to get home. But anyway, thank you to all that, all those who participated with the Fire and Ice, it was fantastic. And thank you to Jeff from Macomb Community College for, and his crew for doing the sculpturing of those great pieces, so. With that, I do need a motion to go into exec session. So, moved?
Support.
Give her a second.
Support.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. We're going to take five-minute recess. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.